Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the school board work session for May 4th, 2010. If I could ask the superintendent to take the roll call for tonight.
Ian Mayer.
Here.
Carol Chelman.
Here.
Kent LaPage. President. Dexter Legg.
Here.
Ann Walker.
Here.
Mitch Shulman.
Here.
Rebecca Emerson.
Here.
John Martin.
Here.
Leslie Stevens.
Here.
Lisa Sweet.
Here.
Linda Brulette.
Here.
Philip Boynton.
Okay. So, we're here at the, I guess, the behest of, from our last meeting with the city council, for the school board to talk a little more amongst ourselves about the budget. So before we actually begin to do that, I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent and he can fill us in on some new information.
Yes, I'd like to share two pieces of information. One is, following the city council meeting on the 21st, I did have a visit with the teachers' union leadership. We had a conversation and they were wondering about ways they might help the budget process, you know, in FY 11. My understanding is today, they had a membership meeting and they voted, I believe, 94 to 44 or somewhere in that order, Linda?
Ninety-seven.
Thank you, 97 to 44 to basically go forward and have a conversation or a dialogue with the school committee to see if there are ways they could help advance this budget this year. The second piece of information that I would share before we begin is, SAU 50, I know Steve Botlet has worked closely with the business manager over there with George Cushing to kind of look at the revenues because we have been told all along, we're going to see an increase in the number of students coming to Portsmouth High School. And so we had expected a $500,000 increase in revenue next year. And in fact, we've kind of compared notes, looked at the numbers, and I know the city staff has looked at it as well, Ms. Belanger, and it looks like we can count on another, safely count on another $350,000 in revenue. So it's an increase of some $850,000. So I would share that with the board as well.
Okay.
Just a point of reference to the superintendent, seeing how that the union has asked to have dialogue, I request, you know, invoke that superintendent set up in the next two weeks, a meeting with the school board negotiating team to have a discussion workshop session with the union in the next, no later than two weeks, whatever it is from today.
Sooner rather than later.
Works for everybody.
Yep. Okay. So, a new piece of information really is this question of new revenue, which is quite a bit. I don't have an agenda of how we're really going to run this meeting this evening, so what I'd like to do is maybe ask the superintendent to pass out the scenarios that we've had in the past. It'll have some new numbers on it, which sort of give a price tag to certain suggestions that they've made in the, in that whole 96% budget. And then I'd like to go around and have people talk and see where your thoughts are at.
So really, what I'd like to share with you is the work that the administrative team did some time ago, I think it was mid-January, in order to submit the 96% impacts on the budget. And so if you're looking at the, there's two sides to it, please look at the side that has the listing of personnel and the dollar amounts associated with it. All right.
I do.
Does everyone have that?
Yep.
Wonderful. So, one of the, one of the points we made all along in developing this budget is we wanted to protect the instructional corps, protect those 139-plus classroom teachers. Then as we moved out to the unified arts, we protected all unified arts offerings and those teachers there as well. And as you recall, we made some modest adjustments with student support services, particularly in special education because of some decreased numbers. And then we sustained all other programming, extra and co-curricular activities. And so when we put this budget together, you will see that the process we used was to pretty much look at each of the principals and could go further down on their list to see how they would help us achieve that 96%. And this isn't in any order particularly, but it's clear when one looks at it that it has an impact on programming at each of the schools. For example, when asked at the elementary school level, each of the principals said, well, they would eliminate one paraprofessional at the elementary school, they would look to eliminate elementary band, and if you go down a little bit further, they talked about eliminating full-day K and going back to a half-day kindergarten option. And you can see the numbers associated with that.
Does that reduce three elementary teachers?
No, that's in a, and that's the other place you'll see a reduction. And a little further down, right. It's further down, Mitch.
Okay.
As I said, this was not, this was, this list was not put together by school. It was kind of a round-robin exercise. And then we looked at the middle school, and John Stokel looked at two ELA positions at the middle school. He also, because we have a rich unified arts program, talked about reductions of staffing in art, family and consumer science, and tech ed, and making those reductions so that you'd offer half the program that you currently offer at the middle school. He also, I'm trying to see, no, there were no other adjustments at the middle school. And then at the high school, you can see that Jeff talked about a guidance clerical position, a .33 art position, nurse at the high school, and a world languages teacher, and then, and a math teacher as well, and then CTE. And then, we looked at the administration, we talked about two positions there, the assistant superintendent, the technology director, and a clerical position, and the sum total of those is some $2.5 million, which gets you to the 96%. Clearly, they are not adjustments any of us wants to make. I'll stand by the 2.8% that keeps the district moving forward. I think it would, it would, it's clear on its face that it will impact programming at any one of our schools to go further than where we are currently. But that's the list we put together. We can talk at length about impacts if you wish, but I, that's what we, that's our list.
Does the other side look any better, or?
Not much better, Dexter.
So this is the good side?
Carol.
Could you just explain the middle school, what that would be? I, just could you explain that a little more?
Yes, so, so.
What would happen at the middle school?
In the unified arts?
Yes.
Well, they have currently two art teachers, two family and consumer science, and two tech ed teachers.
Right.
So clearly, there'd be an impact in the, in the delivery of the program, the amount of time students get the programming. You're not, you're going to only be able to offer half as much, and it'll, so it'll have a, you know, negative impact for sure.
Like for a particular student, what exactly would be the impact?
I wish John were here to speak.
Well, wouldn't it be a study hall? I mean, haven't, don't other, I mean, other programs have a study hall where kids?
So if you have 12 weeks of family consumer science, now you have six weeks in study hall.
Ah, okay. Great, thank you.
And on the music and the, on the art side, as opposed to having the opportunity of two different art classes and disciplines, it would be one and a study hall.
Less instruction.
Right. Supposedly for studying.
After we tried to get rid of the study halls.
Yeah.
Right.
So, Ed, has the administration tried to establish any sort of priorities at this point with these, or you've just worked with each of the schools to identify possible reductions? And have you stepped back and said, from a district-wide perspective, here, here's how we would rank order these additional reductions?
Candidly, no, Dexter, no.
Okay.
Well, and to be fair, I mean, I think the administration did a good job of identifying the three fundamental objectives, you know, that we're trying to protect.
Absolutely, I just want to understand where we are in the process.
Yeah.
Rebecca.
So, at some point, I think it seems like we're going to have to look at our programming. I mean, I hope not. And I think we are going to have to, you know, figure out if, if everything that we offer is imperative, you know? I mean, I, I love everything that we offer, I think it's wonderful, but, you know, who knows what the council's going to do, who knows what next year is going to bring? So I think at some point, we do need to take a really in-depth look and, and then we can have an answer for why having a study hall for six weeks instead of a second, you know, class is, is important. And then find out if what we are offering is, is really worth it, you know? And I don't know if that's a curriculum council discussion or something, but, you know, we just, we offer so much, and I know that we want to offer even more. And I just want to make sure that everything that we do currently offer is, is absolutely the best that we're doing. You know, I don't want to keep something around that's not successful. And I'm not implying that there's anything like that, but.
Kent, were you going to say something?
My question is, are you going around the table, is this your go-around-the-table time, or?
I guess we could start, we could start, this was just a little free-for-all conversation, people, but.
Another process question, as we, as we drive towards this, because we've identified what we would have to potentially cut to get to 96%.
Right.
And I understand that we've been asked to pick certain steps towards that 96% or a 4% reduction. Do we know what those steps are? In other words, have we sort of agreed that we're going to, we're going to report back on, if it would be a 1% reduction, a 2%, 3%, 4%? Or is it, because, because I believe we've been asked to group some of these reductions. And so, so, do we have a, do we have a, my question is, is there a process in place to target to say, all right, we, this, here's how we're going to report back?
Mm-hmm.
We're going to report back on a 1% to get to 4%? So four, four buckets? Two buckets?
Well, I have to say, there's a part of me, I mean, we'll, part of me feels like we'll deal with it when the number comes to us, although we'll have conversations, I suppose, as to what order that would come. But at the same time, if the conversations and dialogue and work session with the union and the extra $350,000 helps us solve this problem this year, which is really a Band-Aid for helping not increase the tax rate as high as it seems to have to be unless there's some things done and adjustments made, if this moves towards that in the short term, then I'm happy not having that conversation.
Let me ask it differently.
Yeah.
Setting those aside, the fact that we're going to get $300,000 in revenue and discussions with the teachers' union may lead to something.
Maybe.
What's the deliverable coming out of this discussion? In other words, what are we going to report back to the city? It just will help me understand, because although we can go around the room and prioritize these in some fashion, each, each person is going to have their own.
Absolutely.
Their own, and, and, and the question is, does it make sense at this point to try and drive to consensus for that or not?
Right.
And because, because I'm not sure we can, we can gain that consensus.
Right.
Until we have a clear number from the city that says, your budget is no more than X.
Right.
And at that point, we can have the hard discussion.
Right.
About what does that really mean? But until that.
Yeah.
Are we going to try and achieve consensus for those steps?
Well, it's not, and I think it's a fair question.
I understand.
And while the question was raised by, I believe, Councilor Spear and echoed by the mayor, I don't, we never got a formal correspondence that said, this is exactly what we'd like to see now. So we're kind of operating in good faith in, in a little bit of a vacuum. But I felt it important, you know, in terms of sharing our list, so folks had a sense of what those impacts would be for certain. I mean, we're not, there's nowhere to go here in this budget without impacting programs.
That's my point.
Are you questioning whether it's worth having this meeting because we don't have a number?
No, but my question is, is that as, as we work as a group, what are we trying to accomplish? What are we going to, at the end of this work session or process? What are we going to deliver? Because if we don't know that, it'll be an interesting discussion.
Mm-hmm.
But it'll be an interesting discussion.
Right.
That's, that's all I'm, that's all I'm, I'm asking, and, and I don't, yeah, I don't mean to be difficult, but I understand once we get into this thing, it's going to be.
I mean, I don't have, I don't know if, I personally, just as one member of the board, I don't know if I have an answer. I was asked by, at the last council meeting, whether we were comfortable with the budget we have in, and I said yes, and I am comfortable with the budget we have in, you know? And so if the city council, and I understand where they're coming from, and they're, you know, it's really a tax issue, if they come back with a lower number, then I think I'd be ready to sit down and roll up my sleeves and work.
So this is what I propose, and I don't want to cut off the discussion, but.
Okay.
Unless, we all agree to one level and another that each of these is going to cut program. And, and, and at one level, the city council can't judge what program is more important than the other.
Right.
We can.
Right.
But what they can judge is, we are going to spend no more than, than X this year in the school system.
Right.
And until they tell us what that is.
Right.
It seems, it seems difficult to begin to try and prioritize these and say that the first, now saying, if we have to cut 1%, it's going to be this stuff, and 2%, it's going to be this stuff.
Right.
I'd, I'd rather know, you got to cut 2%.
Yeah.
And then, and then it's like, okay, now we can have a real discussion.
Yeah.
Because then it's just, it's just sort of theory.
I'm in total agreement with you. Kent and then.
It's arbitrary, and it's sort of.
Yes.
Hypothetical.
I have some ideas and thoughts, and I understand what Dexter's saying, and I think I heard same discussion, but I think there is at least one solid thing we can go out tonight, is that additional revenue. So that, that's something that's solid, it's tangible. It's the only thing I think we probably will go out with tonight. But what I also heard, and again, I'm not, I'll wait till my turn to go around with some of my suggestions, I took the time since that meeting to come up with both new income, which I think was well said there, and I know I had a brief discussion with Ed about one of the things that I would like to see us propose towards them back, because they said if we could show, you know, income coming, that they'd even spend money. I heard that from three different counselors.
Absolutely.
Yes.
But then on the other side, is that, as I'm hearing this, I agree that with this list, but we need to also look at this, if you take the 96%, and I don't think it was done on purpose, but if you take 96% and you take exactly what this year's budget would have been, this is next year's budget, you're looking at something, let's say that they agree upon this, and if they come back in next year and say, once again, you're going to be zero.
Right.
This is zero.
Yes.
So, we need to start tonight to show them what we're going to work with. I know I took some things here, and there's a couple on the list here that I may or may not agree with, but again, zero next year equates to just what we were given. So we do need to let them know where we're thinking, so that they, they want two-year plans, I heard that. We can show that we're going to try to beat, so we don't have to have some of these reductions. So I know I have that, just a quick point though, of order, that $850,000 coming from SAU 50, I want it to be known that that's pretty static after this. It's not going to increase from what, what we've been told, much more, and, you know, if any of it goes down, so next year, we're $850,000, no new money that we can throw back to the city council. So, you know, that scares me a little bit, when we find money and we see there's a nice increase, and then it goes static. And then, if we don't have a product in front of people, and SAU families may say, I'm taking my child out, because they can find that product elsewhere, we have to have a product for them to buy. And again, I emphasize, 96% equates to a two-year budget if, at zero approximately. And I'll, I'll wait until my turn to go through my suggestions.
So we'll go to Ann, and then we can start to go around and people can talk.
Thank you. I just had a question on the other side of the sheet, where it reflects some numbers where we get down, if we include a possible figure from possibly the teachers' union, but then that $528,000 number, is that the number that gets us from that 2-0? Is that what you're trying to reflect, Ed?
You know.
That's an additional amount of money that we would have to get ourselves to get.
If you wanted to, you know, I was, I was presupposing the buckets Dexter was referring to, I think.
Okay.
That'd get us to this year's budget.
But you didn't include in that figure the 350 from SAU 50, in which case.
I didn't, I didn't go on the revenues at all, I didn't.
Okay, but in which case, we're, to get to zero, we're still 178,000 shy. Is that what, is that sort of what?
Yeah, I guess, you know.
I don't want the, you know what I mean, I just wanted to know why the numbers were there. I think it's supposed to reflect, we're trying to get ourselves down.
The point I would make, the point I was making was, you know, at, at the conversation with the city council the other evening was about, with some members.
Incrementally.
Was about, if the teachers gave up cola, what would that amount be? So that categorizes that, it reduces the budget on the expenditure side, then the 1.45. To get to a zero budget, you still have to go another 500 and somewhat thousand in. That's all I was suggesting, nothing more than that.
Okay.
And I, and I agree with Kent that it, that even going forward, regardless, you know, if we are able to come up with enough revenues to, to not impact the budget in any way, the things that start being very drastic, the, what happens to the vision for next year, you know, I mean, ultimately, down the road, you need to be looking at some kind of sustainable path.
I agree. And I think, you know, just, the way I look at it, you know, I feel like this is a very fast process, it's actually a little too fast for me to think about how we're changing the school. You know, I said this way, way, way at the very beginning of the process, I was worried that, that a very fast process to try to save money is not really reforming education in many ways, if you're not careful, you'll dismantle it. So I'm a little nervous about it. And my goal, short-term goal, is to figure out a way to save as much of this budget as we can, you know, call it a Band-Aid, if you will, to just get from now until the city council votes our budget, and we can move forward. And then, as we've all talked about, beginning our next budget cycle process right away, so we can answer those questions. But we can't answer those long-term questions necessarily tonight, so. Okay, Kent, you have a list. Shall we start with you?
Okay, let's start in order.
Okay.
Appreciate, since then, I, I, I've had around some ideas, and one of the things that caught my ear was at the city council meeting when we met back here in April with our work session, was that if we could show long-term income, that they would be willing to back certain programs. So I have three, three suggestions towards the board to look at, and again, long range to me is not two years, long range to me is, is somewhere over five. So when we look at a budget, you know, two years is a short time for a budget. I know that I've budgeted myself out in business at least five years, and when I worked for FedEx, we were allowed up to 12 years. So I want to go over these ones, and then I have some budget reductions that may reflect this. I think it's time to hire a full-time grant writer, half-pay salary, half-pay from income grants, at approximately $45,000, because that seems to be about the average, as I researched. This new hire would be able to work with many areas, finding both long-term and short-term grants, possibly new, new income to the city of Portsmouth, with, like districts out there, show over a million dollars' worth of grants, both long-term and short-term. Now, I'm well aware that long-term and short-term grants eventually come back to the taxpayers when those programs run out. So I'm not suggesting that these are short-term type programs, but without a grant writer, which there are districts that do this on a per diem type basis, they do it on a compensation basis of grant finding, which is highly successful in many communities, I really think we need to throw that back towards the city council, because not only would this grant writer maybe work for the school department, but quite possibly that grant writer could look at citywide projects too. The, the, there is no downside to this, other than we have to find somebody that's good at it. And I think you can go out and find very good grant writers, and this would eliminate certain projects that we now burden on administrative people to do grant writing. So it would give them more time, or they could, I take a Steve Z. Steve Z could say, look, I'm looking at this grant. It takes Steve Z forever to get a grant done, he could hand that information over to that grant writer, and then Steve Z could do one of my next suggestions down the road.
Before you go to the next one, just a question about that. So you're suggesting around $45,000 for salary?
That's correct.
Right. And what you're referring to from the city council, I talked to the counselors afterwards, is they're willing to ask the city to dip into their fund balance to pay for this extra money. That's what I was told.
And with this one, you could actually maybe come out as a zero if this person worked and was able to.
Right.
I mean, you have to allow something to be done.
Okay, so this is under new revenue.
And there are many professionals that, I guess, do this job.
Oh, yeah.
Number two, I have to hire or create from an already existing position, a building and field rental marketing agent. This position would be totally new, new source of income to both the city and the school department. Just for suggestions, with a Hagstrom auditorium and a small theater and over 358 classrooms empty more than 50% of the time, opportunity is very large. Not to mention the new high school all-purpose field, income from all facilities could reach and have been shown at like-type districts to reach over $2.5 million. I also would ask for the school system to re-ask the city, re-ask the city on the gate income. Example of rentals, if we had just 30 days per renting the auditorium at the high school at $5,000 per day, just again, 30 days out of the year, $5,000 would increase and create a $150,000 per year income. One could quite possibly double that with little work with an outstanding auditorium that we provide. The new high school athletic fields with five rentals a year at $5,000 is an additional of $25,000 or more. Also, the high school cafeteria rented out at $1,000 per, cafeteria rented out $1,000 per day with just 50 rentals is an additional five, I'm sorry, $50,000. We also will, will need a person, no matter what, as things are changing in the city, to set up a youth rental, such as Little Clipper footballs, Sea Coast lacrosse, yearly fees, that now will have to be, start to look at. Just like the pool, we need to look at it, and it is to the point now more than ever to run this like it should be, there are no more free lunches. So quite frankly, we sit upon, and there are like school districts, one pointed out in the border area of New Jersey and Pennsylvania, where they are constantly having an agent renting out their facilities. And again, there is income and job opportunity. The third suggestion for budget new income that I have is, food services, time to break the mold. Outsource the whole thing to multi-food vendors that we are willing and able to meet with. Health and nutrition standards must be met, and parents want it now. Maybe we can do better than the Fed's standard and make money. Example, one vendor renting a day space for just $50 per day is $9,000 a year income. Those are just budget ideas, you know, from a business person. And again, these aren't new. By the way, two of these were done in 1996 by myself, and I strongly feel on the grant writer and on the building rental. Budget reductions. It was well heard from what I thought the discussion from the city side, that, you know, whether it's this year or next year, we need, and again, looking at what Ed has given us tonight, we're in this two-year cycle. I doubt we're going to go much above 0% next year, as the city council gathers their thoughts in about five months from now. Time to really look at moving P. This is no less than a $60,000 per year savings. I am a very strong believer in the P program, but we need to make the savings for the long term. To make that move, and I know the health, you know, issue, situations over there where we take kids and we're doing all these things, unfortunately, we're doing it at the expense of all the students. And we, we, I remember when we rented to all those agencies, we were all over at the Jones School, and those agencies were with us. those agencies were with us. And they slowly left us, long before we left the program. So, it has survived and will survive. And I think a number, and you know, I know Nancy Clayberg sometimes rides it a little bit, and she does. She has a child who went through this, and we know that in the high school setting, it could be extremely successful. Second suggestion on reductions, and I see that we have our assistant superintendent within this list, and this is where I think I cross with this, to make sure we don't put in jeopardy in the next year to two years, our assistant superintendent. I think it's time that we look at a couple of administrative positions. The SED director to be eliminated and a three-person shared area. How this would be accomplished is that the PEEP director picks up the pre-K to fifth grade. Two, PAS director picks up sixth to 12th grade, and Steve Z. would be the overseer and acting as the director of that. And again, this is not, if we take maybe grant writing and other duties down the road that have it, what we're looking for, Steve, is to administer with two already established administrators that we have, to work with them, to pick up other parts of the program. Again, it's unusual for a school system to have a special ed director, a PEEP director, and a PAS director. So, I think there's opportunity there. The savings would be around $85,000 per year in salary. As much as it hurts me to say, I think we need to relook, and I've had this conversation since that city council meeting we had in April with a number of people, why is it that we have, and I think it's more of a discussion point than anything, why is it we have five top administrative positions at the high school area? And those five administration positions are, we have a principal, two assistant principals, we have the director of technology, and we also have Russ Wilson there under the athletic department. And they're quite right. I think we need to better tell the story. And I've had the discussion earlier today with Jeff, because I'm not trying to surprise anybody. I talked to him and said these, you know, things that I'm hearing. So, again, some realignments with that might have a savings of over $95,000. And I'm not saying an elimination, but what can we do to show that? Lastly, one that I've harped on for a number of years, and hey, look, I love vacations. I had one about nine years ago. Time to get to just one vacation in winter and spring. Combining over the next two years, winter break and spring, to just one March vacation would have a building savings of startup and shutdown costs of approximately $75,000 when you look at what it costs to run the schools on a daily basis. So, there are things that we can do. Some of these are short-term. But again, from what I heard from the city council, they want us to be creative. They want us to give them some ideas. So, those are my suggestions. The only other two things, as I looked at this chart that Ed gave us tonight, is that I see the reduce of the psychiatrist, school psychiatrist from the budget, 37.5. I just worry, that's the one that catches me, because I know there is a state standard for that, whether we would be in compliance with the number of students we have, and how, if we end up outsourcing some students, do we make a savings? And that one was the only one tonight, and I think we have had other times that you've shown that, and I apologize that I hadn't caught that before and had discussion. Highly would have problems with the loss of the half-day kindergarten. I think it's shown great gains in our test scores. And then, eliminating of the athletics, K to 12. I love athletics. It's not the sole thing of schools. I quite agree that it's this other side of education. But I know that $850,000 that you just found from SAU-50, there are students that would leave because you didn't have certain sports, because they'll go to St. Thomas, they'll go to some of the private schools, because they can afford it. And that would be one that, in the next two years, I would be scared of. Last note. I think it's sad that when we have a reduction in budgets, that I find a gentleman that has worked in the Portsmouth school system, unsung for longer than I've been on the board, that makes $800 a year, and he's a doctor, Dr. Turner, who goes around and collects all the medical discharged bags and so forth, pretty much on a monthly basis, plus gives us daunting information, just, he's a wealth of information, he's an excellent community leader, quiet, shy individual, but very well-knowledge, is that, you know, he gets paid $800 a year to do the services he does. And we seldom see that in this budget, but I just wanted to bring that up when I looked at the budgets and so forth, that that's sad, that the man has worked for the same money for better than 16 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a clarification. When you were talking about the administrators, I thought you said eliminating two administrators?
Well, it isn't. It'd be the special ed director...
Eliminating one and splitting it up.
Right. One, splitting it up in two, and I kind of rewrote it there, because again, looking at the high school, one could say, "Do you add or subtract one or two, or how does that work?" But I think it's something, over the next 12, 16 months, we have to have some serious discussion with.
I just want to make sure I didn't...
Do you think eliminating a SED director, does that put us in a more precarious position from liability perspective? I mean, Portsmouth has a history of not really being sued by parents too often, because we seem to meet...
Correct.
So, that could be a potential follow-up.
But you're not really eliminating. You're redesigning hats.
Right.
And what I think, if you look at other like districts, and I know that, and I've had some discussion on this, is that, you know, there are assistant superintendents that carry that hat. There are, you know, the difference is, is that we have a PEEP program and a PAS program, and that doesn't, isn't out there in too many places. And we have, you know, why is our administration looked at? And I know that just before Lisa and I were looking at things, you know, it's tough to... You can't always compare to other union units out there, school districts, and quite have the same flavor. We have a long, rich flavor of working with special ed, and I don't want to see that disintegrate. I think both PAS and PEEP are an outstanding program that pay off big dividends down the road by keeping students in school for the whole, till the 12th grade.
So, what would be the history of the SED director? How long has it been that districts have had a SED director? I mean, was it prior, when inclusion, when the whole inclusion movement came out about, say, 20 years ago? That's when districts started to really move in that direction? Or longer, do you think?
I think so.
Okay.
We've had one here since I've been here. 33 years. Bruce Bulley was the first, was the SED director. So, it isn't like it was like a novel idea.
Right.
We've never not had one.
Okay. Gotcha.
My caution would be to just look at what the tasks are that need to be accomplished and who does them. And so, it's probably, probably what you're suggesting at the end of the day, Kent, is to really look at the key tasks and who does them, and how you might reorganize, how you might reorganize.
Absolutely.
But I wouldn't sit here tonight and say that you could eliminate a SED director with some 400 children and all the tasks associated with that. That would be, that would be difficult. But perhaps, you know, looking at what are those key functions that need to happen, and how can we, you know, consolidate in some respects, I think is fair.
So, anyone else have any thoughts?
Yes.
Kent always brings up PEEP, and I'm not a fan of changing that program, but I would like to have some really concrete numbers, like current numbers. Is it possible? I know that we've gone down this road before, but is it possible to get current numbers and what it would take, like a description of what it would take to bring that program to the high school, and what we would need to do? I know there's some bathrooms that would need to be reconfigured, and just have some concrete information about that, because I feel like we're kind of, we throw it around and we talk about it, but I don't feel like I know exactly what it would require and what it would cost and what it would save.
Anne, you have a question?
And to go along with that, I guess, it might be appropriate as well, at that same time, to talk about why PEEP, how PEEP came about, a little bit about its history, and why it has been in the past, in that same building at the community campus, with Families First and all those other, you know, there was some comments made with the city council that, you know, parents can get their child to whatever facility they need to, and that, you know, the dental work they need, and that kind of thing. I think that that needs to be a part of that conversation in terms of what are the kinds of needs that those kids have, and how are they appropriately placed now with kids who are also typical kids? So, they are not, it's not solely special ed kids in that program that need to be reintroduced to a typical environment. So, a little explanation about that and a little history might be very helpful for some school board members.
Right. And I would add also, maybe a little explanation of the curriculum of the early childhood education program that is at the high school, where, you know, people say, "Well, you could just move them in there because you have a preschool there, you have, you know, little people." But there's also a curriculum that exists, so I'd like to know how that would be impacted if you moved a different population in.
Okay. Yeah, so I think those numbers would help. I mean, we've heard, you know, Kent has used that number of about $65,000. You know, I know there would be some upfront costs. You've mentioned that yourself in the past, of moving. So, the question is, the savings would be over more of a long-term, and what would that actually be with not having to pay rent? And then, there's the opportunity costs of what you're losing by moving students.
But a caution, there's an opportunity on the other side there.
Well, there's every, right.
Right. We currently have a part-time nurse that's out at PEEP. We currently have food service issues that are addressed out there that, again, you can, you know, I think I would want it very clear of the balance of what it has to offer. Like I said, at one time, PEEP was managed with PAS, and I can remember the outcry when we took the PEEP kids away from the PAS kids. "This is going to be disastrous." And it was for a little while.
All right. Okay. Any... Rebecca, sorry.
Yeah, if we're talking about revenue generating ideas, the tech ed center at the high school teaches real-world skills, and I wonder, I know I say this all the time, we need to look into seeing if that can translate into income. And then, the other thing, I was having a conversation with a teacher at my elementary school, and she lives out of district, and she sends her child to St. Pat's, Tuition's Inn, for the convenience of being, you know, in Portsmouth. And she would love to be able to tuition her child into one of the elementary schools here. So, I don't know if that's something that we want to think about, you know, of course, if there's room in the school. But I think that says a lot, that one of our teachers would prefer to send her own child to the school she actually works in, instead of in the town she lives in. I think that says something really positive about our schools, that she really believes in our schools.
Rebecca, just for point of order, we have two teachers that currently do that.
Well, I think we need to...
And more requesting, didn't we just talk about that?
Well, I think that that might be, you know, part of a broader conversation, you know? It's income, of course, provided that there's room, provided, you know, they provide their own transportation and all these things. But I think that that's something, you know, I mean, she would, she would jump at the chance, and I have a feeling, besides the two that already do, there might be more out there. So, I think that's something that we should put on the table.
Your policy?
And I don't know if there's a policy about it.
What was it?
Well, we just went through that, didn't we? I mean, we just had that discussion.
We just approved a teacher, new Franklin.
Right, but that was a special request, and there was, you know, medical issues involved with that. And I have, and I think that, you know, and this other teacher said, "Well, I would love to be able to do that," but there's no outlet for her. There's no policy. There's no, "Hey, why don't you do this?" So, I, you know, I think it could be a win, it could be a win for everybody.
Big money difference, though.
Right.
St. Pat's, their $4,000 a year.
Well, I understand that. And, but I think if we make that option available, and if we open...
It sounds like it is available. It sounds like a couple of teachers are doing it.
I don't think it's, well, I, well, one was, it was a special request, it was medical issues. I don't think it's a widely sought-after...
It's not advertised.
Yeah, we're not advertised.
So, you got to come, you got to come and ask, rather than promote it.
I mean, if we...
So, your point is, we need to promote more of it?
Exactly. You know, and of course, provided there's room and all this.
Although, in the near term, we do have an elementary bubble, and maybe adding to that enrollment.
Well, and that would be looked at, and of course, each individual elementary school or middle school would be looked at.
Space available.
Exactly, yes.
All right.
Quiet. Just to follow with what, a little bit on Rebecca, in the last six years, seven years, we've had three districts come before us to look, and I know we had some discussion with Trape as early as a year ago. I'd like to see us follow up and see if there's any interest. I mean, I know, Ed, you've had some maybe dialogue, and maybe there's no longer an interest there. I know New Market was interested three years ago. I know Fremont has visited us, and Deerfield, oddly enough, has come to us twice. There are these other towns out there. And again, it's not giant revenue, but for the high school and maybe the middle school, especially with the expansion of the middle school, it may be very palatable to a small town that might be paying more right at this point. And again, it's the opportunities. I caution that I see, you know, some things, starting TV media being cut from here, somebody might be coming, and that might be an interest. Athletics, you start to cut these things. You don't have it to sell anymore.
Oh, yeah, right. And they don't come back so easily.
No, they don't.
So, Carol?
I just want to say, I appreciate the comments that everybody's made so far about some of these ideas. I think that it's the kind of thing where no idea is a bad idea, and the more ideas we get out on the table as board, and the more we go back and forth with each other, the better decisions we'll make ultimately. And I do think that the city council is looking for something like what you've done, Ed, and I think this is very good. But I do think that they are very much looking for us to do the kind of thinking, some of the ideas that Kent gave and some that Rebecca gave. I think they are really looking for us to think outside the box. I've said this before, to really try to rethink the way that we do things. If there's any possibility that we're going to be doing anything close to 4%, we have to completely reorganize the way we do business. And I understand what was said about reform that's too quick and dismantles the system. I understand that concern. But I also know that there's a lot of research out there right now, that this bad economy that we've been in has resulted in a lot of really good reform at the business level. And sometimes, these kinds of bad times are what brings about the reform. And so, I think that we really have to stop thinking about doing business the way we've always done it, and start thinking about how can we completely rethink this model. And I think we're going to have to do that. If it's not this year, it'll be next year. And along the lines of ideas, I know this is just a very small idea, it's a very small amount of money, but I just want to throw it out there. I know that we don't charge for football games, and, you know, I know it's peanuts, but it's something, it's somewhere to start. And I think also that we should look at transportation, using the bus system that the city already invests in, particularly for the high school students. I know in Europe, kids get to school all the time through public transportation. It works great. It's very sustainable. It's, it would be a really good way to go, and it could also save us money. And then, I think we should look at our athletics more, not just as a complete, flat-out, we go to pay-to-play, but look at different sports and how much they're costing us, and make decisions, hard decisions, about, you know, what's most important. And I also think, I heard the city council urging us to look at other tools other than class size to improve education. And I think that they were talking about online courses using technology, and that would go also under the heading of, they offered to give us more money. So, maybe we could come up with a plan that leverages technology to improve the quality of education and reduce the costs in the long term. But maybe there's an initial... So, those are a couple of my ideas.
Thank you. I know in the past, I mean, I'm totally in favor of being, especially at the high school level, for courses that we can't afford to hire faculty to teach, because we don't have enough students. But, you know, there was an interest, it was last year, I believe, or maybe the year before, in the virtual high school, which was that online. And Susan Burrell took the initiative before anybody else did, which makes only sense because she's the technology director, and started exploring that by teaching in it. Because that, the way that worked was, in order for you, your district, to get, let's say, 20, 25 seats, in others, so that means you can have 25 students, not taking the same class, but 25 students taking any kind of online virtual course that's offered, a teacher in your, in your district has to also teach a course. You know, so she took that step. You know, so she took that step. But I don't know how far it went because I don't believe that there was a tremendous rush to the door of people to participate. And, well, both on teacher's side, you know, and possibly, I don't know about the student's side, but, you know, so I know it's been looked at and I don't think it's been totally, you know, thrown out the window, but, you know, that's just, that takes getting teachers on board to do those type of things. You know, and then you need to think of, from Jeff's point of view, you know, is, I know there was a concern and they're, not just, not with him, but I mean, just in the literature in general, is it a one-to-one? You know, people who haven't taken online courses aren't comfortable with the idea that the rigor of an online course is equal to the rigor of a face-to-face course. Anyone who's taken an online course really knows, in many ways, it's more rigorous to take an online course than it is to do a face-to-face course. But it also means the student has to be self-directed and motivated. So it's not for everybody. Sorry?
And have access to technology.
And have access at home, possibly, you know.
What Carol was saying made me think about the high school and the block scheduling and how this past year there was an elective course that only had six students in it. And so I think when we get to the point of really looking and evaluating, I think we need to look at that as well. Because that was just not nice to see, that there were so few students taking this one particular course.
It was one course.
Well, it was one course, but we took, I mean, that's-
So if you'd eliminated that course, you wouldn't necessarily save that. You wouldn't eliminate a job.
Well, I think we need to look at the whole block scheduling thing. And the reason that those, they were, that that course wasn't eliminated is because of the block scheduling. And I think, again, it's something that when we look at, you know, like not slashing all of athletics, but looking within it. And I think, and this goes back to what I was saying before about how, looking at all the programs that we offer. I mean, I think we need to start a comprehensive review of, of everything. And is everything that we're offering, are we doing it in the best way for our value? And so, and I think that that might be-
You might need to-
Because I remember, I asked, sorry, I asked Jeff about it and he said, well, we couldn't eliminate it because of the way the scheduling was set up. And I understand those six kids need to go somewhere, but disseminating six kids into a high school of a thousand is not gonna overcrowd one particular class. They're not all gonna go to the same place. So I, anyway, I think that needs to go along with, you know, the overall looking at, at what we're doing.
So throwing ideas on the table, I've thought about this and I have, I've had other people suggest it too. It's, I don't have any idea whether it would actually work or if it's actually even legal. Gamble it, no.
Just a math class.
Just a math class.
Statistics gambling.
You know, so I've had a number of people in the community, you know, suggest to me that, you know, they'd be willing to, to pay more money, not in taxes, but, you know. So I'm thinking, just for example, you know, we've set aside a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our budget for technology, even though we'd like to have more. You know, but there must be people in the community and corporate citizens throughout the area who might be willing to contribute to a fund that would then, so if we were to raise, we talked about this at the technology committee.
Right.
You know, if we were able to raise from individual contributions, a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that means we could take a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the budget next year and we can buy technology with that money and save the taxpayer some money. These are short-term and it's really more of a Band-Aid. I really don't know if it's legal and whether that needs to go into the general fund like everything else goes into the general fund and, you know, quietly just disappears. So I have no idea. It would be a great thing for WAVE to think about.
Mitch, just to follow that, I mean, oddly enough, I had a discussion with somebody I've been working with on the SIP committee and her and her husband are very much willing, and I think you can do specific type funds and so forth. And this person said, look, there must be those, she didn't, they don't understand about free and reduced lunch, but there are students that might not be able to do it. She would be more than willing to pay for one, her and her husband would be more than willing to pay for one child to have lunch every day. So again, that could go into a fund to help reduce and that child would then be able to have a very good meal. And again, it may be somebody who doesn't qualify for free and reduced but is on the bubble.
Can, and then, I'm sorry.
You have to think about the fact, when you, that free and reduced number is also the number that makes you eligible for grants. Because there's, there's a line for which SAU 50 isn't eligible for grants because of the economic stability of our communities. And so with that-
True.
We, we're not eligible. But if Portsmouth has a big enough number of people who rent and those kinds of things and they, you have a free and reduced population, that makes you eligible. In fact, I think that just the last big grant that you had was at the middle school, that three-year grant. I can't remember what it was called. No, it wasn't technology.
The homework club thing?
It was started as the homework club originally.
Right.
And then it, I mean, it started, the homework club evolved from it.
Out of that, with those big sisters.
The Fannie Mae.
Yeah.
Fannie Mae Foundation.
Yeah. Speaking of grant writers, my wife wrote that grant.
That's right, she did.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Ann and Annless.
Well, I had just a lot of little kind of piddly things, but if you put them all together, I, I had, had questions about what would be the cost of moving Peep as well. But also, adult education, it's a very, very small amount that we support. But I feel more strongly we need to be taking care of our children's education before we worry about the adults. Also, the late bus. I think you all got a letter from somebody today and a couple of comments about lowering the temperature. And I know a lot of schools have done that, lowered the temperature. I know that doesn't work for the middle school because you're roasting one room and freezing the other, no matter what you do. But in terms of the other schools, I think. And then, instead of an assistant superintendent, maybe readjusting the way the high school works with, with the assistant principals. Again, job description kind of thing. I don't have an idea in mind, just a thought.
Okay.
Late bus, I said, late bus.
Yes.
You did. One of the things that I've been noticing is the artspeak donations that come into the city. And it might be, they're, they're huge, you know, just since February sixteenth, it's upwards of twenty thousand dollars. So it might be a good idea to talk with whoever is administrating that program and finding out how their, you know, what is their mechanism for soliciting donations for-
How can that money be used?
Cemetery committee, too.
So there are other committees in the city that are soliciting donations that are able to keep their money. So how is that working? And, you know, can we piggyback on some of that or use some of their ideas? And it might be worth talking about, talking to the city more about that.
Oftentimes, there are grants to the police department that show up on the agenda as well.
Yep.
So that, and that goes back to the grant writer situation.
Do they have a grant writer?
I don't know. The grant, the proposal to look into getting one. I don't know, I don't know, but there's always donations. There's always donations coming in or grants.
I think in response to the question about, you know, looking deeper into the athletics and, and looking at those that, you know, not cutting across everything, but just looking at specific programs, you know, there is that sheet that was handed out. So everybody should have that, which just gives you a very rough sense of, of numbers and breaks it down by salaries and supplies. Just so that you know that, reminds you that you have that. And the whole number is three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Okay, so, any, yes, please.
Well, I, I just want to kind of take a step back a little bit and think about, I mean, I think Dexter started off asking what the, you know, priorities were and had we sort of, you know, created buckets of priorities and levels. And I think, I think what we have to remember is that the budget that we spent a lot of time developing had three driving priorities and fundamental objectives that, you know, protecting the instructional core and keeping student services strong. There are cuts there, but, you know, we believe it's sustainable and, and maintaining the extracurriculars, so it's a protective factor. So, you know, I mean, below that, and you said, the two-point-eight percent keeps us moving forward. So below that, the big bucket is, we're not moving forward and we're not protecting those objectives. And that's, you know, kind of the simple end of it. And I want to make sure that people understand or remember that even with the tightening budgets, since I've sat on the board and, you know, probably before that, that the district has been able to take strides forward, even though, you know, maybe we haven't gotten the technology that we need. We're, you know, behind on our facilities. Our class size is creeping up. I mean, those are things that are very visible impacts from tightening budgets. But quietly and without an impact to the bottom line, we've kind of moved toward, you know, the PLCs and we've moved toward developing different assessments and really focusing on student learning. We've gotten as much money as we can get that's been out there as far as the big grant at the middle school for technology. You know, we've got the money for the R.A. money, you know, that we were able to get. You know, so I want to just make sure that people know that even though we've been cutting, we're quietly moving forward. And, you know, we've got the middle school project moving forward. There are more and more people coming from SAU 50. We've got a lot of national recognition. And I think it's really important to not just nitpick away at all the programs. I think we need to look at them holistically. We need to look at technology, how that can be leveraged. But, you know, that's in its infancy. And so if you, you know, if you read the research, it's all over the map as to what will work and what won't work and, and how you implement it. And, and the equity issues involved with, you know, the fact that it's, it's private education, you know, basically within your schools. You know, there are a lot of issues. There are a lot, a lot of promise, but a lot of issues to work out. So before you just say, oh, let's go do that, let's go do that, we really have to think holistically and, and long, long-term. I think that when I look at the research as to, you know, what is working, you know, there's a big article in the New York Times Sunday on charter schools and, you know, their success. And if you look at that, that thirty percent that is having good success and you look at what their key operating objectives are, they're here and we have those. And, and we don't want to get rid of those, you know. We don't want to go back and get in line for, you know, something that we're already doing. So I just, you know, I want people to remember that as we have these discussions.
Yeah, just to follow up on, on that, I mean, I think I really mirror a lot of the comments that you make. Listening to all the different ideas, I think, you know, one of the things that is really key here is that, you know, that these ideas, whether some are good, some are not so good, the point being is that, you know, if we have a good idea, you know, we should be implementing it. You know, that, you know, we don't have a point in time when we suddenly, you know, come down and huddle to figure out, you know, okay, we, we gotta find some ways to do things. You know, that, you know, this is an ongoing process that, you know, we're focused on what I would call continuous improvement. That if we find nuggets of goodness, whatever time and place they are, that we jump on them. You know, that we're not sitting there trying to squeeze, you know, the balloon into a shape that it really is not supposed to be in. So, you know, I, I like the conversation, you know, we might have something that comes out of it, we might not. But I want the conversation to continue and that it's not something that just happens during, you know, a time of need, but it's more of a philosophical approach that we take that says that, you know, we're, we're focused on continuous improvement. And, you know, sometimes we find something, sometimes we don't.
And how do we maintain the things that we are doing right, you know, even in, in the difficult economic times? Because there are also vulnerabilities that, that are real for us. I mean, our elementary, two of our three elementary schools are, you know, experiencing leadership transitions. You know, that can be great and it can be, you know, a difficult thing. All of our elementary schools are experiencing a bubble, so class size is going up. Little Harbor is getting close to needing officially a, an assistant super, an assistant principal, because I think the number's five hundred. They're gonna be at four-twenty next year.
Four-fifty.
Four-fifty next year. They're at four-twenty now. You know, so, and they lost Title One. And yet they still have the highest number of free and reduce, you know, the highest free and reduced number in the city. So there are definite vulnerabilities that we need to-
Right.
Protect. Think about.
Yeah.
Think about.
Dexter.
So what our experience has been, that we know, is that when things get cut, it's very difficult to reintroduce them. And so over the course of the next two years, I would argue that we protect at almost all costs our programs. Because once they're lost, they're impossible to bring back. And so, and, and, and I would argue that this is gonna be a two- or three-year cycle. And it won't, it will, it won't always be like this. That the state revenue, in fact, the economy will come back, the state revenues will increase. The state will stop pushing down expenses to the towns and cities. Because remember, we don't have a cost problem here. We have a revenue problem for the city. So whatever we do, and I like the ideas of, of trying to reorganize some of the leadership roles. I like the idea of working with the teachers' union because at the end of the day, that, that, although it's painful, it's something that can be recovered, if you will, because you're, you're not, you're not cutting back program. And I just strongly encourage us to, over the next two years, to, to try and protect the, the key programs we have. Because as Lisa said, it's precious. We actually have it right. We're doing a lot of good things. And I think we can, we can reduce costs but still insulate those reductions. So, I mean, this, this would be catastrophic to the district and to the programs that we've built.
Right.
And it'd be catastrophic to the students.
Right, it would, yeah. Yes.
I just wanted to talk about revenue for a minute because one of the questions that keeps popping up in my mind, and Steve, you may know the answer to this better, but we're not allowed to keep our revenue. So, and there was discussion at the end of the budget season last year with John Dohanko about can we keep our revenue?
If we have extra.
What's that?
If we have money left over.
If we have money left over at the end. But also, if, but also, you know, some of the things we're talking about could make us money. You know, I think Carol mentioned charging at football games again. Where does that money go? The, I don't know if people got a chance to read this letter. One of the suggestions that the woman who wrote this made, and she had a lot of really good suggestions, was a central website set up by the school where donors can contribute online for an organization or designated fund. Something like, like what you were talking about, which is, what's that?
And what Mitch was talking about.
And what Mitch was talking about, with something like a food, you know, fund. And now that the city has that ability to take credit cards online, that, that's a new thing. Maybe we can talk to the city about doing that. Another thing she talked about, and this is a great idea, is a wish list. Can we post a wish list on, you know, the, the city's website or our school website or whatever so that, you know, schools that need a specific thing can get that if somebody has it? So I think Kent's right. There are people out there who are willing to help. Also, corporate sponsors, you know, can we go and ask? You know, can we start talking to, you know, asking for corporate sponsors? I mean, certainly artspeak gets a lot of them. So I guess I'd like to know more about how, how that might work and if the city is willing to work with us on that.
Like naming rights?
Yeah.
Rebecca, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, one of the programs at New Franklin that we're doing is adopt-a-classroom.org. And it's where people can put in specific things. So, and we've talked about doing it by grade level and I'm sure you could accommodate doing it by school level, too. So if schools need, and that's, that's the wish list. And since that's a donation from parents, the idea was instead of giving them a mug at Christmas, you know, if teachers really need, you know, Kleenex or whatever supply they need. And so then that sort of circumvents the whole going back into the general fund because it's a donation to the classroom. So. And we could do that citywide, too, so that the city hall could get their tissues donated, too, just like the middle school. They could have a tissue drive and paper drive and all of that.
It would be a lot of tears.
You got that right. Kent.
Kind of some things that I had thoughts on here. And again, I think, you know, there are multitudes of ways to have revenue. I don't think it's always gonna be gigantic. I did give a couple of examples that I do believe can be high-revenue producing. But it's odd that we're sitting here and Dexter made the point in regards to, you know, in a few years of state, the feds, the county, you know, are gonna probably have some money. I mean, it's cyculatory to a degree. But a year ago, I was madder than hell and still don't agree with it that the federal government dumped billions of dollars into the car industry. And I may not philosophically agree with that, but isn't it odd that here we are, a school district with the most precious resource, not the goddamn car, but the most precious resource being the kids, that federal government's not dumping a dime into us to revitalize and make sure schools don't fail? You know, the success is, is that GM and Chrysler, who got very large amounts of money, you know, did the right thing. They, they have been able to start to pay it back and some of them fully with interest. Well, you know, I challenged the federal government, I challenged Judd Gregg, Carol Shay Porter, our representatives, to look at it, investing immediately back into the school system. our representatives, to look at it, investing immediately back into the school system and seeing what the return we would have. We're not just siphoning money off, and that's what sometimes public education gets looked at. We're a public education, we're not a free education, and sometimes people get the two mixed up somehow. And I'll be quite honest, we house crossroads, and we have a very high transient rate of very difficult students, and we don't get really a damn thing from that. And I think that's wrong, that we have certain pockets like that and do not get our just money to help those individuals in the deepest needs, because they are the biggest needs of, of students when they come in. Not their fault.
But if you look at foundation money, and if you look at race to the top money and government money, where that flows into are very low performing districts who
Got to fail.
Who are adopting the sorts of things that we are doing here right now.
Absolutely right.
And we're not going to qualify for those funds. Bill Gates is not going to say, oh, Portsmouth, you need me. He's not going to do it, but he's looking at Portsmouth and he's saying, these are the things that you're doing right, these are the things we need to replicate in order to turn districts around. And if we cut those things, if we cut our programs, we're not going to have those things anymore.
That's right.
They're not coming back, and nobody's going to give us money.
Right. So if I could just sort of, sort of sum up, a couple, a couple of things. One is, I think people need to remember that there's a public hearing coming up, and I think people need to remember how many people came out to the last public hearing and actually spoke in support of the 2.8 percent budget that we gave, just to make that point, because that auditorium, I think, was quite full. Many people, myself included, were actually stunned by the number of people who showed up. I think to Lisa's point that she's made tonight and in the past, and I read an article recently on this as well, which has to do with the kinds of intervention program we have, you know, I think there are, as some councils were suggesting, maybe we can think of ways to do better with less, I think it's important to point out that there are strategies we already have in place, that have just been in place for maybe a year, particularly the intervention strategy, that really is a, a potential money-saving program, because you're, you're going to catch those kids before they fall and end up with IEPs, and then it's going to be very expensive. You know, so I think we really need to, exactly as you suggest, we do need to protect the core, and, you know, going back to that, I just drew it again at, earlier, you know, that concentric circle model that I had in my mind when we were initially talking about the budget, the core, which hasn't gotten any smaller, but then there's the Unified Arts and Special Teacher Services that has gotten a little smaller, and then there's the support services all the way around, and that's just sort of coming in. So I think the point about protecting the core really, really is key. I think one of the things that Kent was saying, in terms of the money that might even be available to do some of these from the city council, you know, not everything necessarily saves money. You know, some of these programs are expensive. I, I've talked to a couple of people in other districts, principals in other districts, we no longer have math, science coordinators, and we seem to be doing okay, but I mean...
We need the math.
We need the math, right. You know, so, but that's something that, you know, citizens and taxpayers who don't necessarily have kids in schools and know exactly what goes on in schools, don't have a clear clue as to what that kind of job means, and it seems, you know, sort of superfluous because they're not involved in front of a classroom. But oftentimes, you know, I think the teachers would agree, and everyone knows, you know, talking about curriculum, keeping focused, having professional development, I mean, curriculum coordinators fit into that, I can't imagine we'll ever have them again, but, you know, I just want to make the point that, you know, I, there are things that we do need that are important, that will help continual, continuous improvement, and nuggets of goodness, which I wrote that down, because I think that was a great little phrase. And I also think we do need to be very careful, from the teacher's point of view, because I think one of the biggest problems in education is what I would consider to be, you know, change fatigue. I mean, all these great new ideas that come in and come in, everybody who's new on a board has a great idea, and the next thing you know, you're implementing it, and all of a sudden, you know, teachers who've been around for a long time, they've seen so many great ideas come and go. And it's really the core in the classroom and the curriculum of what they're doing, and, you know, I don't think, for example, I don't think technology's come, is going to be going away soon, but I just think as we talk about these things and consider implementation, we need to be a little careful and keep the teachers in mind, because we may think they're great ideas, but we're not the ones implementing them in the classroom. The teachers have to adopt the idea, they have to buy into the idea, they actually have to believe that, you know, this innovative idea is better than what they're doing. If it's not better than what they believe they're already doing, I'm not so sure most teachers would adopt that idea. So we just need to be a little bit careful. And I just want to also point out, so this is a public document, the city council will be able to see these numbers that we're talking about, maybe we could actually forward it to them, you know, officially.
I suggested that this, you, you're probably going to do this, Ed, is to reorganize, reorganize this, sort of by, by
School, or span, grade span.
So you have the elementary schools and middle schools, so you get a sense of where those cuts are.
Okay, yeah. Ian?
I wondered also whether or not some of this could be lumped together to indicate this little clump of things would represent roughly 1 percent, and this little clump, not little, big clump of things would perhaps, I think that's what the city council is looking for.
Yeah, but the only reason I don't want to do that, because we haven't, we haven't decided what the appropriate clumps are. All I'm saying is that, that just
Yeah, I was going to say.
But it's what Ian's really asking, is it student impact, is that what you're saying? I mean, you could give, you know, you know, the paraprofessionals one each at the elementary school, that's, maybe that paraprofessional has 10 students under them or some, I mean, I think if you say, I mean, what we don't have, and I don't think you'd have solid numbers, but, you know, what does one paranormally have? It has, you know, responsibility of X amount of students.
Yeah, some of them have the entire
Steve?
Some of them, some of them have two grades under them.
I mean, there are others here. We know how many kids are out for athletics, we know how many, I forget what the other one was, music and drama, we know with the, the number of students in each one of those.
Mr. Barlow?
The idea is, I think everybody's agreed, and the consensus has been that it's not prioritizing at this stage of the game.
Right.
It's showing impacts. So to take Ian's thing a little further, you could put a little scale on there, that said 1 percent represents this amount of money, 2 percent, or something like that. You give them a scale, and they can look at the pieces and figure out
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Instead, that, that way you're not, that way you're not clumping and you're not prioritizing.
Yeah, I like that. I like the impact idea. In fact, the administrator, you guys had come out earlier in the process with an impact state. You know, and so, rather than priority, that would be helpful as to how you feel that these different cuts would actually impact.
If you grouped them by school, then you could say, for these, for these reductions, the elementary school level, here would be, here would be the impact, either in reduced program, number of increased students per class, whatever it is.
Right.
It'd be worthwhile in the middle school, the reduction in Unified Arts means, instead of 12 weeks, they would get six weeks and six weeks of study hall.
But I think that's a discussion that maybe has to happen further, you know, that we decided not to have.
I don't know if that's what the city asks for, if the city council asks for, what's the, what's the impact?
Because, you know, you raise class size, maybe you add, you know, more time to your delayed opening days, because as you're analyzing more research per teacher, they might need an extra hour or half hour, you know what I mean? Like, there's, there are just a lot of impacts, I think, that happen, and I don't know that we want to be
You couldn't be, you couldn't be comprehensive in any subject.
Right.
Rebecca?
I just, in this whole discussion about talking about how good we are and how Bill Gates won't give us anything, because we are such a great school district, I suddenly had this thought that as great and wonderful as we are, we're still lacking, I think. So, you know, we're, we're at this budget, and it's okay, but it was originally a seven-point something budget, and we're still getting rid of the technology integrator at the high school, which, moving forward, is going to be key.
Right.
We still don't offer world language at the elementary school, we're getting outpaced by everybody else in the world and in our country. So I think, you know, as great and wonderful as we are, we're still falling behind, we're still inadequate. I think we, we offer an inadequate product right now, and we're being asked to make it even, even less. That's not to disparage our teachers at all, we are doing a wonderful job with what we have, but we're not doing our complete job. We, we are not offering everything that we need to, to make our kids competitive. So I think we need to remember that also, that we're lacking a lot.
Okay. Okay, last thought, maybe?
Yes, last thought.
Okay.
And this may be more food for thought, Ed, than an actual suggestion, but I'm wondering if you could describe some of these things that would be cut more from the perspective of a child, rather than as so much of an administrator. And I have heard this criticism of us before, that we don't put things in the terms of a child, and, and it's more abstract. And we don't want it to be abstract, we want it to be real, and we want them to say, this is what a child's life will be like if we cut this. And I think Tom Frini wants to hear that, he wants to know, how is this going to affect kids? And so I would just make a suggestion, or food for thought, to just characterize things in a way that is professional, but also puts it in the perspective of a child.
Okay. So just a reminder, we have a meeting next week, on Wednesday, not on Tuesday.
Time and location?
I don't have it in there.
It's the regular business meeting, it's 7 o'clock here at City Hall.
On Wednesday.
And Monday is the public hearing at the high school, part two, and Tuesday is the city council's meeting for themselves to discuss budget, yes?
Oh, just finish your schedules, I have a schedule item done, I'd like to just
I'm done.
Okay, so I mentioned it before, I'll remind you again next week, but get on your calendars, May 19th, which is the JBC meeting, where the JBC will discuss a proposal for phasing at the middle school.
Oh, yeah.
That then this board will receive on the following Tuesday, May 25th, for a discussion and I hope approval. So it will be important, I, I would say it would be important for all of us to be at that 5:19 meeting, so that you can hear Gil Bain, who is our construction manager, present their proposed phasing for the middle school.
So you're actually looking for a vote on the 25th?
We are looking for the
Because the timeline is so tight.
To stay on schedule, the timeline's so tight for us to stay on schedule, we're looking for a vote from this board on May 25th.
Time and location?
It's 6:30 at the Levinson Room, right, at the library?
6:30 Levinson Room at the library.
At the library, 6:30, May 19th.
Okay.
And just a clarification, the regular school board meeting is next
Is next Wednesday, not Tuesday, as it's, as they usually are. It's Wednesday, I think that
Here, 7 o'clock?
Well.
Yes, here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mitch.[1498.13]